Good evening. I'm going to call this work session of the Salem City Council on the airport business plan to order. If the recorder, please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton? Absent. Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leon?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay, Counselor Hoy, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we'll just start right up. Ms. Rutherford, do you want to kind of lead us on this or Mr. Powers?
Yes, I would, unless, unless Mr. Powers would like to, I'd be happy to kick this off. And I'm not hearing him jump in here, so I'll go ahead and do it.
Just a couple, a couple of quick comments first. I want to thank councilors for taking the time this, this evening. We know during the budget season, especially the, the requests from the city for your time increase. So we do really appreciate your time this evening. A second, I think we've broken the Kristen curse. This, this topic is, is, has been rescheduled at least twice, once because of the ice storm. So John and I were joking that we think it has to do with Kristen. We're both happy that, that the curse is broken and you'll have an opportunity tonight to hear from Kristen, John, and Mitch, Mitch Hooper from our airport development consultant, Need and Hunt. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I do want to note that Counselor Gonzalez is with us.
Wonderful. All right, well, thank you, and as our city manager pointed out, yes, this is, this work session has been a long time in the works. So the first time it was canceled was due to the pandemic, and then we had the ice storms. And all day I have been on pins and needles because I have a daughter-in-law that is about a week or so out from her due date. And so all day I've been expecting the text that it's happening today, but so far we're good. So I just need to make it through a couple of hours and, and, and then we're all fine.
Even if you have to.
Even if you have to. It'll take them that long to get to the hospital, right? But thank you all for joining us tonight. We do appreciate it. So I, before I introduce the presenters tonight, I want to just give a little bit of, of an overview on what we're going to talk about tonight. And for those that may be watching, I know we have received various comments about commercial service or thinking that this, this work session might be about commercial service or about airport expansion. While we can certainly talk about those issues, if council has questions, those, that's not the focus of this work session. We will not be presenting about commercial service or about airport expansion. We are going to start with a little bit of history and background about the airport, what we do, what it serves, why we have the airport, what our obligations and commitments are in terms of our relationship with the FAA. We're going to spend some time talking about emerging technologies. You know, we hear a lot of, of concerns in the community about the airport and greenhouse gas emissions. So we're going to be talking about what's down in the pipeline. What are we looking at in terms of changes in the field of aviation? And then, then we're going to be talking quite a bit about some upcoming decisions relating to the airport that may lead to an updated master plan, talking about rightsizing the airport, the financial sustainability of the airport, those sorts of things. So I, at this point, I want to introduce my presenters. I have John Pascal, who is our airport manager. And I have with us this evening Mitch Hooper with Need and Hunt. So we work very closely with Need and Hunt on all of our airport planning, master planning, environmental work, all of that. So I think that we've done a, a lot of work thinking about the information that we want to share tonight and have a presentation that's probably going to take about 30 minutes. We can either answer questions at the end, or if you do have questions, because some of the information does get a little bit technical, we've tried to keep it out of the weeds, but, but we do get the, in the weeds a little bit in a couple of places. So if you have any clarifying questions or want to talk about something a little bit further, please don't hesitate to interject. We've got plenty of time this evening to stop and answer your questions. So with that, I will turn it over to John Pascal.
Thank you, Kristen, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity finally to discuss the Salem Municipal Airport with you. Actually, I think our first, our first postponement was January of 2020. So we're, for 16 months trying to catch up with you now, so better late than never. As Kristen mentioned, I'm the airport manager, and I've had the pleasure of serving the city and the citizens of Salem in this role for nearly 10 years, maybe 10 years this September. I thought what I might do, I know that we have several new councilors, many of whom I have not yet had the opportunity to meet, so I will look forward to that sometime in the future when, when we're able to do such, but I wanted to spend a little bit of time and just share with you some information about the airport, maybe an airport 101 and a primer, just to give you a little bit of background. The airport actually opened in 1929. So we're coming up on 100-year anniversary here in about eight years, which is hard to imagine. Through its first decade of operation in the 1930s, it was one of the most robust pilot and aircraft mechanic training facilities on the West Coast. The Irelie School of Aeronautics pictured here was located on what is now the Oregon National Guard Aviation Facility, located on Turner Road. The photo in the upper left would be looking towards Turner Road, and the field in the back would be approximately where Lowe's and Walmart are located today. The lower right-hand photo would be looking towards the Fairview Industrial Area and towards the South Salem Hills. So it gives you an idea of how far out in the farmland the airport was back in the 1920s and 30s. In the 1940s, the, the US Army operated the airfield to train pilots for the war effort and made significant improvements to the airfield, much of which is still in use today. The above diagram that hangs on the wall here in the airport terminal is from the US Army Corps of Engineers dated May 9th, 1944. In 1948, the War Assets Department returned the airfield to the city of Salem. Shortly thereafter, in 1950, the original portion of the commercial terminal was constructed, which is where the airport administrative offices are currently housed. And over the next several decades through the late 1990s, improvements continued on the airport, most of which is what we manage, operate, and maintain today. Today, the 751-acre airport is home to more than 130 aircraft hangars and several businesses, which employ nearly 600 people, and the facility supports nearly 40,000 aircraft landings and departures each year. Day-to-day airport operations include maintenance of over 100 acres of pavement, 650 acres of grounds, an extensive airfield lighting system, three airport-owned buildings, and keeping the facility compliant with FAA standards for commercial service airports, all of which is managed by 4 1/2 FTE. The airport is operated as an enterprise fund, excuse me, as an enterprise fund. It collects its own revenues primarily from long-term land leases and pays its own expenses. There is no city general fund money appropriated to airport operations. The next slide provides a good depiction of the airport's facilities. The airport perimeter is outlined in purple and of course requires several miles of fencing. I believe we have 38 gates around the airport. We have two runways, an extensive connecting taxiway network, several acres of aircraft parking ramps, several miles of service roads, and roughly 150 buildings. You might be able to see with the green roofs. Other than the three city-owned buildings, which are the terminal, the Flight Deck Restaurant, and the Weather Building, and then the state of Oregon owns, of course, the National Guard and Department of Aviation buildings. All other structures on this airport are privately owned and on long-term land leases with the city, which provides more than 90% of the airport's annual revenue. Airport Business Plan. The 2017 Salem Strategic Plan included an action item under the priority area of economic development for the development of an airport strategic business plan. Over the course of nearly two years, staff received significant input from dozens of businesses, tenants, airport users, and other aviation professionals, and completed the plan in 2019. The six key recommendations in the plan include preparing and marketing vacant land for development, improving existing airport infrastructure and amenities, including terminal upgrades, increasing awareness of the airport as a destination for aircraft owners and operators visiting the Willamette Valley, strengthening the airport's role as an emergency operations and disaster response hub, particularly in response to a Cascadia subduction earthquake event, pursuing partnerships and opportunities to support onsite STEM and aviation-focused training and education, and supporting the community's effort to establish commercial air service. Excuse me. In terms of economic contribution, the airport is a tremendous economic engine to the local community and provides a number of critical services to the surrounding communities and the region, including forestry operations, disaster relief, search and rescue, law enforcement, aeromedical services, cargo delivery services, aerial surveying, and many other commercial, industrial, and economic activity functions. The Salem Airport supports over 1,400 jobs in the community, including 17 on-airport businesses employing nearly 600 people, another 846 jobs indirectly, accounting for over $55 million in payroll and $243 million in business sales. Significant levels of commerce pass through the Salem Airport. Both locally-based aircraft owners and visiting aircraft spend money in the local community, purchasing fuel, food, hotel rooms, rental cars, and other goods and services. Federal investment at the airport has been robust. The FAA has invested $20 million in the Salem Airport in the past 20 years, including $14 million since 2013, primarily in pavement rehabilitations and an extensive airfield electrical upgrade in 2014. This particular upgrade replaced the entire airfield electrical lighting system, including installation of high-efficiency LED runway and taxiway lights, which has reduced the airfield power consumption by approximately 40%. Each time the city accepts a federal grant, it agrees to abide by 39 separate grant assurances, which are ongoing obligations the city accepts in exchange for each investment, each federal investment. Each grant acceptance resets the obligatory period for an additional 20 years, and any violation of the grant assurances can delay or, excuse me, or prevent future funding and/or expose the city to repayment of previously awarded grant funds. I won't go through the 39 grant assurances, but some of the key obligations, I think, are important for you to be aware of are, of course, we have to maintain the airfield to current FAA standards. We have to protect the approach and departure airspace from obstacles. We must keep the airport open and available to all users of the aviation system. That includes flight schools, military, night operations, commercial air service, and any and all types, kinds, and classes of aircraft. We cannot discriminate. The city must ensure compatible land uses on and around the airport, which primarily means commercial and industrial uses, and preventing residential uses or allowing large congregations of people. The city must ensure that all airport revenues are reinvested in the airport and that the airport should be as financially self-sufficient as possible. And the airport must follow FAA procedures when leasing or selling its property or releasing any of its property for non-aviation development. That's going to the end of the airport 101 kind of, kind of high-level section. Unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Mitch Hooper to talk about current trends in aviation.
Yeah, I, I have a question, Mr. Mayor of John.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, thanks. The, you said that if we don't follow certain regulations, FAA rules and regulations, we could lose funding or have to pay back funding. Does that include, and I think it does, keeping the airport available for commercial flights? I think it was Section 139 was in the report.
So, yes, Counselor Anderson, the airport is certificated as a Part 139 airport, I think, is what you're referring to.
Yeah.
And that means that we have a special certification that we manage and operate the airport to a standard that we're allowed to have commercial air service.
Okay, so, so if, as long as we operate it to that standard, whether or not we actually have commercial air service in terms of getting federal money is, is not relevant.
That's correct.
Okay.
What we can't do is we can't discriminate against commercial air service.
Right, right.
If an airline wants to serve the community, we can't say that they can't operate here.
Okay, what happens if we were to say they can't operate?
They would likely, well, they certainly would, could make a complaint to the FAA and then we'd have an investigation.
Okay, then, the other thing that you were talking about was industrial areas that we have to get FAA approval for non-directly airport-related functions.
Sure.
One of the things you're talking about is that you've got 70 acres that are unused pretty much there, and I think either 40 or 30 you were looking at for industrial uses. So you don't see that if we use that for non-airport-related industrial uses that the FAA is going to give us a problem with that?
That's correct, and we'll talk about that here in a little bit during Mitch's presentation.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, the FAA has actually be, become less and less stringent on the use of airport property, but if we're going to release any of our property for permanent use other than aviation use, we have to have their permission for a permanent release. A perfect example is when we did the Madrona intersection right out here in front of the terminal on 25th Street. There was about an acre and a half of property that had to be released to accommodate that rerouting with Madrona and 25th Street. And we went through the land release process. We had to show why it was a, a greater benefit to the community than saving that property for the front yard for parking and such, so.
Okay, perfect.
They just want to know what we're doing.
It's kind of a reasonable person standard or a reasonable standard as to what we have to, would have to show the FAA?
It is, and, and really what it comes down to is we have the, one of the grant assurances I mentioned is making sure that the airport is financially self-sufficient. Airports our size that don't have a commercial service revenue. I mentioned earlier in my presentation that over 90% of our revenue comes from long-term land leases. There's obviously a larger pool of potential developers in the commercial industrial field than there are in the aviation field. So they're, they're, and they understand that it, it makes sense for airports to release some of their property for that revenue generation and to benefit the community. And then that revenue comes into the airport to help support the airport itself.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom, anyone else? Okay, John, go ahead.
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Oh, okay, Jim.
Yeah, I want to go back to the business plan that, number six, support the community effort to reestablish commercial air service. I'm not going to say exactly or ask you what support means, but I am going to ask, is the airport currently ready to welcome commercial air service?
Yes, sir, we are. The airport is essentially what I would consider turnkey. All of the facilities that we need to accommodate air service, we currently have. Obviously, we've had air service in the past. We continue to maintain our Part 139 FAA certification to accept air service. Really, the only thing we would need to do would be to contact the federal government to stand up a security checkpoint. And obviously, the airline would have to move in all of their equipment. And, and I'll answer the question even though you didn't ask it. As the, as the owner of the facility, obviously, we have to be involved, and we have to have some measure of support for that community effort. We can't have a community effort that wants to use a city facility without being involved to some extent, if, if that makes sense. One of the things, obviously, the council has authorized was for us to apply for air service development grants. And there's, so there's some tacit support there, and obviously some level of support as the community tries to establish air service.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I, I can only see a few people at a time, so just sing out if you would like to. Okay, John, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, we can certainly come back to any of these along the way. We've, we've got plenty of time. With that, I'll turn it over to Mitch Hooper with Need and Hunt. Need and Hunt is the airport's aviation planning and research consultant up in Portland. Mitch has been doing work for us for now, well, the decade that I've been here, and I think maybe just a little bit before that. So he's going to talk a little bit about trends in aviation. Mitch?
Great, thank you, John. Good evening, everybody, thank you for having me. I'm happy to be here to talk a little bit about some of the trends in aviation. Similar with John's presentation, if you have any questions, please jump in. Happy to answer them as I go or answer them at the end. So some of the key things that I'm going to talk about include some of the trends in aircraft manufacturing. I'm going to talk a little bit about the airport's role in Oregon Resiliency Plan, and then we'll dive a little bit deeper into trends in non-aeronautical development on airports as a way of diversifying airport revenues and supporting the ongoing aviation mission.
You talk about that drone on Mars, too, that was really cool.
I, I, you know, I wish I could talk in detail about that, but I, you might know more than I do about it. Yeah, it's a, it's a historic day, absolutely, historic day for flight. So some of the things that I want to talk about, just to, to start us off here, is the electrification of aircraft. That's something that has really been gathering a tremendous amount of momentum, and we're seeing quite a bit of research and development right here in the Pacific Northwest. And so one of the first pictures I have up here is, it's actually of Redmond, Washington, not Redmond, Oregon, but a startup up there that has been converting Cessna 208 caravan aircraft into electric aircraft. So the Cessna 208 caravan is commonly used by FedEx in the Pacific Northwest to link smaller communities to Portland International with air cargo overnight packages. So it's something that operates at Salem right now. And there are already instances where commercial operators are using electrified versions of these aircraft, such as a, a float plane operator up in British Columbia. And so these aircraft are already hitting the market. And so some of the advantages of these are, number one, they are quieter than the conventional aircraft that they replace. Depending on how your electricity is generated, they could have a potential for being greener because they're not running on fossil fuels. So obviously, that all really depends on where your electricity comes from, but it's, it's a step in the right direction. They're not running on the 100 low-led gas, which is a, a source of quite a bit of controversy in the aviation world and something that the aviation community is trying to move away from because of some of the, the risks associated with it. They also, when it comes to serving the flying public, they have a lower operating cost. And the reason for that is the electricity needed to charge them is less expensive than the gas, whether that's jet fuel or of 100 low-led. And so that can help, in addition to them being quieter, it can help get, whether it's flight training or moving people or packages around an area, it can offset some of that cost and make it a more viable alternative than it is with traditional fossil fuels.
Do we offer a service area for electric? Or are we there yet in terms of providing a place where they can top off or whatever it is they do?
That, that is a great question, Mayor. We are not there yet, but as we start talking about a master plan update, I think these are things that airports are going to have to start considering.
We'll be talking with PGE and others about how to get this put together or?
We're not at that level of detail yet, but one of the things, as Mitch goes through some of these, like Uber Elevate-type plans, is that there's going to be a tremendous amount of, of power generation needed, obviously, to support the recharging of multiple aircraft.
And, and you have, you, you will be looking at that in your business plan, including that as part of your plan forward? Is we will have, we will be developing facilities to service this part of the industry?
I certainly hope that we will. In, in addition to that, I'd like to be able to reach out to some of these new green technology companies and encourage them to set up shop here at Salem Airport.
Just so it's, I'm just curious if it's in the business plan. Will that, will you be telling us later? And we'll be working on getting these cited.
So Mayor, it does, that's not in the business plan, but as we look at undertaking this master plan of the site, that this is something that we will be exploring.
Good, okay.
Here on the site, this would occur, what other support we need, what sort of, you know, power jet? And does PGE have enough power in the area right now to support something like that?
Right.
Yes, we'll be exploring all of that.
Mr. Mayor, I've got another question.
Yeah, Tom.
Thanks, I totally support what the mayor said about EVs, and I'm excited about the, I shouldn't call them EVs, they're probably e-planes, not electric vehicles, electric planes. And I, I think that's terrific. I'm wondering, Mr. Hooper, if you could talk a little bit about leaded gas? That seems to be a, a concern with aircraft, just like, especially the smaller private ones who don't run jet fuel, just like it was in cars, you know, how many years ago before we had unleaded gas? And I know that the airport's in my ward, and there are people who live close to the airport who have some real concerns about the effects of leaded gas, you know, and takeoffs and landings. Takeoffs especially, I'm wondering, what is the national trend? What everything's going to happen with the use of leaded, small airplane fuel?
All right, yep, so that's a, I, you know, I could spend the next hour talking, talking about that. So I'll try and keep this relatively brief and hopefully able to address your, your questions here. So for those of you who aren't aware, lead is added to aviation fuel that piston-powered aircraft use as a way to stop the engine from seizing, based on the way that the engines are designed. That's gross oversimplification, but that's essentially why it's in there. So piston-powered aircraft use fuel that has lead in it. Turbine-powered aircraft, like jets and turboprop aircraft, do not. They use a fuel that's more similar to kerosene. The, this has gotten a lot of attention, particularly here in the Pacific Northwest, about the emissions of, as these aircraft take off and land, that their emissions have lead contaminant in them, and it's affecting the people that live and work near the airport. As far as what the industry is doing about it, there are a couple of things that are going on right now. One is that there is a task force that is looking at a potential replacement fuel that does not have lead in it. It's not something that I'm necessarily directly involved in. I know its progress is probably a little bit slower than a lot of groups would like. There are concerns about the size of the market, and if it's really truly a viable, viable to replace it, that's probably beyond my, my scope here to comment on that, but that, that's some of the discussion that I see generated around a replacement for leaded aviation fuel. What I will say is that electric aircraft are gaining a lot of traction from users who traditionally used piston-powered aircraft. And one of the biggest users are flight schools. And the cost of learning how to fly in this country has really increased based on, and it's largely tied to the price of fuel. I mean, you've got your instructor, the aircraft rental, but the price of fuel is highly variable. And general aviation, much like automobiles, is just susceptible to price fluctuations. So.
I have a quick question before we move off of this, please. Sorry.
Yes, absolutely.
Nobody can see me, but, so I'm wondering what the percentage of aircraft at our airport currently are piston-powered using the leaded fuel versus the, the aircraft that can, that don't use that?
Yeah, I don't have that off the top of my head, John, I'm not sure if you have it handy.
Sorry, unmute myself. We don't track aircraft, we don't have the ability to track aircraft by type or obviously type of engine that they use. I guess I would say anecdotally, 50/50, maybe 60/40 to piston aircraft. Most of the aircraft that are based here are smaller piston-powered aircraft. The business jets that fly in and out of here, obviously, the military aircraft, those are all turbine-powered aircraft. So I'd probably have to go back and do some math, but that's sort of my, my rough guess.
Thank you.
So I believe I was talking about the, the flight schools and electric aircraft. So it's, it's in, the flight schools that are purchasing these aircraft are using it as an opportunity to lower the cost for flight training, and then you get the added community benefit that these are less noisy than the aircraft that they're replacing, so less disturbance on your neighbors. As John mentioned, the, the, an upcoming master plan is a great opportunity to look at not only the facilities that these aircraft need for maintenance and, and upgrades and charging, but also to look at research and development, similar to the, the Garmin facility that you have. There's opportunity to attract these type of businesses to the airport. And one of the key reasons for that is that the facilities that you have, as far as your runways and taxiways, are perfectly capable of supporting these type of aircrafts. So you don't need to go out and build a new runway or anything like that to handle them. They can already come here and operate here.
Great.
The next trend is urban air mobility, or sometimes called advanced air mobility, and that's that second picture of the, the rotorcraft, where it says Jovi taking over Uber Elevates air taxi plans. So this, prior to the pandemic, was an industry that companies like Uber and similar were looking to launch in the United States in a couple of test markets in 2023. Those plans have since been delayed because of COVID and because of some of the shakeups in the industry. It is an emerging technology, so there's, right now, a lot of mergers and acquisitions and things like that going on as they try to get these aircraft certified. But the industry does persist and they're looking at getting these aircraft into urban markets to help alleviate some of the congestion. Granted, it's not going to solve congestion problems, but it'll provide an additional element into the transportation infrastructure. The range of these aircraft, depending on, on which one you look at, the ones that are in development now are between thirty and sixty miles. So not completely inconceivable that this could connect somebody in the Salem area to Portland International to catch a flight or somewhere else within that range. And the thought is that over time, the range will improve a little bit, as well as these aircraft designs mature. They are electrically powered. Right now, the plan for the ones that carry people is that they will have a pilot in them. They won't be completely autonomous aircraft. There are ones that are in development that are autonomous, but those are seen as a little bit farther, farther away, not only because of the technology, but also the public acceptance. I don't know how many of you would get into an aircraft that had no pilot. I, as an aviation professional, I don't know if I would right now, but that's just me. But anyhow, that's again, that's an opportunity, not just for transportation, but also for research and development and for flight training. That these aircraft will need pilots, at least for the foreseeable future. And those pilots will need to be able to fly in, in airspace that is regulated by the FAA. So there will be, unlike Uber, where you just need to have a driver's license, you can't take anyone off the street and let them go flying. They, they have to have some training. And so there's an opportunity there. And then the last two images on the right here are related to the Sustainable Aviation Fuels Initiative that is making some, some, gaining some ground lately. The way this works right now is that airlines are using biofuels and they're mixing them with their standard aviation fuel, that Jet A or kerosene fuel that they currently use. And so they're operating on blended fuel, but they're doing this on, on a test basis and they are doing this with passengers onboard to show that the concept does work, that there's a way for them to use less of the, the traditional fossil fuels and more of this biofuel. It's, uh, can be collected and processed and refined here in the United States. And so lowering the overall transportation, you're not pulling things out of the ground. And then what it burns is cleaner than the fuel it's replacing. All right. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the role of the airport in the Oregon Resilience Plan. And so what this map here shows is how the airports in the northwestern part of the state are categorized according to the plan. It shows that Redmond, Eugene and Salem are what they call category one airports. And then there's a sprinkling of green dots on here, such as Aurora, McMinnville, Newport, that are classified as category two. Portland International is that red dot up there, the, where Portland is, the top of the map. The significance of being a category one airport, it means that the resilience plan has identified these airports as critical in the first response in the event of a cascade or other type of natural disaster. These are the airports where the federal government, FEMA, Department of Defense, emergency responders, they would use these airports to bring in supplies, to bring in people, and then use them as staging areas and use either helicopters or trucks or whatever was available at the time to get the equipment and supplies and people out to these other communities. So this airport being a category one does play a very important role in the state's emergency response plan. And again, that's, that's based on the existing facilities that are here today that support this mission.
And Mitch, if, I'm sorry, could you, if you would back up one slide, I'd just throw in there. April twenty nineteen, FEMA actually came in and conducted a three day assessment and then supplied me with an actual airfield assessment and operations plan. So we have a working knowledge of what FEMA intends to do and where they intend to stage all of their aircraft and which buildings they intend to do, what operations out of at the airport. So it's sitting right behind me here on my shelf, one of those, one of those white binders that you can see. And so that's how important it was to FEMA is that we were one of the first airports in the state to get that assessment and operations plan completed.
That's a good point, John. All right. So the third trend in aviation I'd like to talk about over the next few slides is non-aeronautical development on airports. So there's quite a few things going on on the slide, but I'll, I'll step through each of them. The first one, this memorandum here is related to the FAA Reauthorization Act of twenty eighteen. And when that act was passed, there is a section in it called section one sixty three. And it pertains to airports going through a process to release property that they own from aeronautical obligation to make it easier to develop non-aeronautical land uses. Uh, in the past, the FAA was very hesitant to allow airports to use their property for non-aeronautical purposes, but they've realized that many airports, particularly general aviation airports, have a tough time breaking even or even turning a profit to reinvest in their facilities if they aren't able to diversify their revenues. And so the FAA, uh, and through this act of, of Congress, made it so that airports can get prior approval that if a developer expresses interest and this developer is not necessarily aviation related, that they are developing something that's compatible with the airport's operations, that they can move forward with the process following the, the rules and regulations of development in the community that they're developing in. So it really cuts the pro, the timeline of the process down quite substantially. And that was one of the biggest hurdles to attracting developers on an airport when they learned that they don't have to go through not only the local process, but they also have to deal with the FAA, which could add considerable amount of time. And so developers often would see airports as less attractive sites and they would go develop somewhere else where they didn't have to deal with the FAA. This image on the bottom right here is a picture of the Portland Troutdale Airport. It's a project that Meaden Hunt worked on. And that, this project was a master plan where we looked at the future, what the future of this airport would be. We looked at right sizing the airfield, consolidating aviation uses on the south side, which is the bottom of the map here, and then opening up the northern part of the airfield for aviation compatible, non-aeronautical development. As John mentioned a little bit earlier in his presentation, the revenues that are generated on an airport as part of the FAA grant assurances do have to stay on the airport. But this type of development, as the port of Portland moves forward with implementing it, it will help fund continued operation of this aviation facility. And so while there is, the airport is not exclusively aviation use anymore, it is more financially resilient and well-funded and the airport can continue to maintain the features to a high standard and continue to provide services for the aviation users that use the airport, also creating jobs for the community and, and encouraging the compatible development. There was some discussion a little bit earlier about the developable property on the Salem Airport. So this graphic here depicts the seventy four acres that are available for development. These are sites that are pretty much clear of the approach and departure corridors of the runways. That's really your, your biggest restriction to development on airport property, that you can't put structures right at the end of your runways, you have to keep those paths clear. And so right now you're looking at about seventy four acres. And as John mentioned, while the FAA is less resistant to allowing airports to develop non-aeronautical on their property, they do want to make sure that there is enough property preserved to continue to support aviation users. So you don't give away all your property and all of a sudden you can't build any more hangars or have any more aviation users come to your airport. There has to be a balance there. So one of the things that was looked at as part of a prior exercise was a possibility of some sort of airfield reconfiguration. And I do want to stress that this is an old map. It reflects the airfield layout from the last master plan. You'll see a runway extension depicted here that's, was developed in a time to serve a type of aircraft. It's no longer flying commercially anymore. So that's, I, I don't want that to be the main takeaway here. There's a runway extension on this graphic. That's not the point. What the point is, is that through a planning exercise and looking at all the facilities that the airport has, including some of the challenges with some of the existing facilities that John's going to talk about in a moment, there may be opportunity to open up some additional property for development that the airport could then use to satisfy the FAA, that there is plenty of property available for aeronautical development. And there's also additional property available for non-aeronautical development. So it can help diversify its revenue stream and use some of that non-aeronautical to help fund some of the improvements that would be needed in a situation like this. But anyway, it's not, not, not a foregone conclusion that this is, what this would look like is merely for discussion purposes of, of what could be potentially in the future.
And, and what it's showing us is closing the second runway. Is that what it's doing?
That is, that is correct. And, and John's going to talk in a little bit more detail about some of those challenges associated with that runway and what sort of opportunities there are to, to mitigate those challenges.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question.
Yeah, Tom.
This is for both you, Mitch and John. Let's assume that in order to get more usable, non-aviation industrial stuff that is compatible with the airport setting, we need to make some changes in the configuration of the runways and the nature of your showing here. How would that be paid for? Is that something that we're going to get some sort of federal aviation grants? Is that something that we would figure that the additional income from ground leases on the, on the industrial property would pay for that over years? Will we have to go to a bond? I mean, how, how, how would you envision us actually paying for this? With the caveat, as John said, that this is, uh, uh, an enterprise fund and you've got to break even.
John, are you happy with me starting to answer that?
Yeah, if you, yeah, that's fine, sure.
So that's one of the key things that an airport master plan would look at. Any type of airfield reconfiguration, the master plan would look at the federal eligibility of the improvements suggested. You know, typically at general aviation airports, us as airport planning professionals try to maximize eligibility of everything that we show to make sure that they are high priority for federal grants. So with a lot of these types of improvements and reconfigurations, they would be federally eligible and the airport would put them on their capital improvement plan. And the FAA would be a partner through the planning process so that they buy into the concept and the ultimate vision of the airport, which would pave the way for future funding. That being said, not everything will be eligible, but by, by and large, most of the pavements and apron reconfigurations would be.
Yeah. And I would follow that up with saying that generally, you know, major overhauls like this on airports generally come in, in phased approaches, typically short term of zero to five years, you know, five to fifteen and then fifteen and beyond. And so if we, if we were to, if we were to undertake a process like this, we would certainly want to phase it where we, we were able to make it all federally eligible. And as we were to open up more property for development and it became developable and we generated more revenue, then we would have that revenue to reinvest in the airport and then obviously grow it from there. And that would be the, the business strategy behind how we would handle it. Certainly with our limitations and our, our airport fund, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in my next section. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be a proponent of undertaking anything that isn't, that doesn't have a funding strategy associated with it because there just isn't any. I know there's none in the airport fund and I recognize that there's none external to the airport either. There's too many competing priorities in the city, so we have to make, make it honor them.
John, what's the timeline on runway abandonment like this? I mean, are you looking at a five year public process? What, what, what's the?
It really depends, Mayor. And I'll talk about that a little bit more as I go forward. Here we'll talk about some other constraints with this runway. So this is, again, this is a concept drawing that we worked on a while back, really for a whole other, whole other reason. But if, if we scroll back a slide or two where Mitch showed the, the Portland Troutdale Airport, this would be a, this was, be a similar concept to what they did there. So they took their airport and they said, okay, if we right size it and then we develop it differently to where it can be self-sustaining, where the port of Portland didn't have to fund it out of PBX's coffers, what, what could that look like on the Salem Airport? And so that was part of the, the exercise here. We have, if Mitch scrolls back to this, this drawing of the airport, you'll see the red lines, those are building restriction lines. And so we wanted to see where do those fall? How much extra property would we be, would develop? How much infrastructure would we lose? How many more taxiways would we have to build or not have to build? How much less infrastructure do we have to pay to maintain in the long term? Because obviously there's a cost associated with that too. So this was part of a different planning exercise, but as I go forward, you'll see, it'll probably come a little bit more into focus about why that secondary runway is becoming a little bit more problematic than it was the last master plan, which is now a decade or twelve years old.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions before we move off, off Mitch and back onto the rest of my presentation?
All right. So we get into the meat and potatoes of why we're here tonight, for the most part, challenges and opportunities for the airport. And really what does, you, you, you've picked up on some of it already. One of the reasons we're here tonight is that we're really at a decision point about this airport's future, including issues related to the secondary runway and its impact on the airport, both today and going forward. This, this photo that you're looking at right now is on the secondary runway looking south towards the South Salem Hills. You'll note the rising terrain and the extensive tree growth south of the airport, which have become an issue for aircraft approaching the airport from the south. There's similar tree growth on the north end to past Mission Street, but that's flatter terrain, so it's not as problematic. But the rising terrain with the trees south of the airport is. The tree growth on both runway ends is such that in the interest of safety, the airport's had to place two of its navigational aids out of service indefinitely. These navigational aids are called precision approach path indicators, or what we call PAPs for short. If you look on the, the picture, you can see the four red lights to the left of the runway. Those are actually what the PAPs look like when they're on. And I'll explain in the next slide really what a PAP is and what it does, just to give you a little bit of context. Mitchell, scroll that slide. There we go. As I mentioned, it's a lighted navigational aid and it helps guide pilots approaching the airport for landing and lets them know if they're on the proper descent angle. If they are, they'll see two white lights and two red lights that are depicted in this, this diagram. If they're below, they'll see the four red lights that you saw on the previous slide. We've got one PAP at each runway end. The airspace below and up to the approach slope obviously has to be clear of obstruction so that aircraft that happen to be below the proper slope are not in danger. Because of the obstructions that penetrate the PAP approach slopes, i.e. trees, these navigational aids have been placed out of service and pilots using the airfield have been alerted to these obstructions and discouraged from using the runway at night, particularly problematic at night when you can't see trees. Either the obstructions, i.e. trees, must be removed to return the PAPs to service or the PAPs have to be permanently removed. And while they're not a required piece of equipment, they are a welcome safety feature for pilots using the airport. The next slide will represent, is a visual representation of the numbers of trees that are impacting the airport on the, just on the south end of the runway. So this is facing the South Salem Hills that we looked at prior. We have the same issue on the north end. There are literally dozens of trees that penetrate the approach path, all on privately owned properties. There are no existing easements over these properties that would legally allow for tree removal. So we'd have to have all of the property owners agree to allow us to remove their trees, which we assume would be unlikely. People do have a fondness for their trees and for shade and those sorts of things. Obviously, as trees continue to grow, the problem only worsens and becomes increasingly more expensive to solve. The next step we took was, and that's the next slide, to put cost estimates towards some of the options going forward. So we worked with our, our consultants at Meaden Hunt, including Mitch and his staff, to look at alternatives for each end of the runway to provide us cost estimates and to assess if there was a viable financial path leading to full obstruction removal on this runway. Well, there's a lot of technical information in the chart and I won't bore you by walking through it all. The takeaway is that there are limited alternatives, particularly on the south end, that's the blue side here. And any alternative that we choose is going to get us into the hundreds of thousands of dollars, which the Airport Operations Fund cannot support, which is not eligible for federal funding because it's on a runway that is no longer eligible for federal funding. And of course, would require all of the property owners to agree to tree removal. Additionally, the costs represented in this flow chart do not include the additional expense of acquiring easements over these properties so that we can prevent future tree issues and future obstacles as these trees on these properties and probably other properties continue to grow, which then of course creates future obstacles. So even if a viable financial path forward existed, it would likely be an ongoing expense to the airport. So it really leaves us with three options for this runway. If we decided to keep the runway for the long term, we'd have to identify a funding source, remove the tree obstructions, purchase easements so that we could allow for future mitigation. And the airport fund budget would have to be modified so that we could put aside funds for future tree removal. So it'd be an ongoing problem. A second option would be to keep the runway, but shorten the threshold, the approach thresholds so that the trees are no longer obstruction. So instead of a five thousand one hundred foot runway, it could be a three thousand or a two thousand. Whatever the number would be, we would have to do analysis and see what that would be. But depending on what those modifications are, at some point, the runway becomes so short that it's essentially unusable and it doesn't make sense to keep it anyway. And then obviously the third option is to eliminate the runway. So that's where we are today. So that's where we are today. So in the next slide, as we've had these discussions with the FAA, and of course, we have, we've had to. In our annual joint planning meetings with the FAA, the future of this secondary runway continues to be a primary talking point. The FAA planners are interested in the long-term viability and future of this runway, given the following facts. Both approaches are obstructed by trees, the removal of which would have to be 100% city funded. This runway is not eligible for federal grant assistance anyway. The last master plan essentially made it an ineligible runway. So all future maintenance and rehabilitation costs of this runway going forward are going to be 100% city funded or airport funded. Keeping the runway in place, and this is where the FAA has been putting pressure on us the last couple of years, requires more than $10 million in required taxiway realignments, which then would require at least a million dollars in matching funds, which we don't have. If you recall early in my presentation, one of our grant assurances is that we will continue to operate and maintain this airport to current FAA design standards. This is an old, essentially military airfield and we have a lot of design standard issues that we have to solve. And finally, we talked about a little bit ago, is the location of the runway and its protected surfaces that reach off the airport restricts our ability to develop both aviation and non-aviation property. So it limits the airport's ability to be financially self-sufficient in the long term. If we only develop those properties at the south end, whether they're aviation or non-aviation, that's all we have. This airport's landlocked, there's no other property to go acquire to develop. So we have to make the most efficient use of the property that we have going forward. So when you tie all these together, the FAA is interested in understanding what our plan is as the city of Salem. And as such, they're strongly encouraging the city to look at its 20-year master plan, consider right-sizing the airport to help solve these issues and move the airport in a more sustainable direction. And they are making funding available for, making funding for a master plan update available as early as next year. They've actually moved that up from either 2024 or 2025 up to 2022 because they recognize this as a timely issue that needs to be addressed. So with that, staff is seeking city council support to engage in an airport master plan update. We will return to council at a future date likely in early 2022 to initiate the master planning process. And I just saw a couple hands go up.
John, I have a quick question.
Yes.
So ultimately, whose decision is it for the disposition of that runway?
That's the city of Salem's airport, so it's the city of Salem's decision. But at some point, if you don't solve safety issues, the FAA can eventually start pressing on us through grant obligations.
When you say the city of Salem, do you mean city council, city administration? Whose decision is it?
Well, ultimately, it's the city council's decision, the direction we take and where staff manages manages the city facilities for the city of Salem.
Thank you.
And that would be city council through the master plan update process.
Yeah, I didn't want to leave Steve out of there either. I have a chain of command that I follow.
And this is, this is all about that secondary runway. Everything that you've told us is just about that runway, not our primary runway.
That's correct, yeah. So our primary runway doesn't have any of these obstacles.
Okay.
And this would be, this would be a discussion we'd be having if we only had one runway. In fact, the road is going through a similar mitigation process now. They only have one runway, so they have to clear their obstacles, they have to protect that one runway. I know that Roseburg did a similar effort a couple of years ago. We have two runways, which is nice to have. It provides me the flexibility when we have an accident or if we're doing maintenance on one runway to land aircraft on another runway. Certainly, the local airport users like it because it's convenient for them to be able to taxi off and get to their hangars much more quickly. But at the end of the day, our primary runway is clear of obstacles. It serves all of the airport users that need to use this airport. So we are only talking about the secondary runway, yes.
And we have the easements we need and the kinds of protections needed at each end of that runway?
I think for the most part, we do, yeah. I think there might be a couple of parcels that we're short on easements, but for the most part, we have everything that we need for that runway.
Part of your master.
In its current configuration without the length.
Okay. So your master plan probably won't include right side, correcting those problems on our single runway? You'll keep that? We're okay the way we are right now?
We would have to go through, so I get this question quite a bit from people that still like to see a longer runway. The FAA require us to do another planning study and justify the longer runway. I don't know that we could do that today.
Yeah.
I think the way that they count those types of aircraft now, I'd be surprised if we could justify it. But certainly, again, back to Councilor Hoy's question, it's the city's airport. The city does not have to put an airport runway extension on its master plan if it chooses not to. It's not the FAA's airport, it's not the FAA's decision. It's the city's airport to develop it how they see fit for their community.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Tom?
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one is, when I see right sizing, I think that means downsizing. Right sizing would not be, you know, making it bigger, it's going to be making it smaller with respect to that runway. The second thing, and this is, I mean, it may be a completely stupid question, but that won't stop me from answering. And I'm looking at the PAPs. If you can't see the PAPs, why can't you elevate the PAPs 50 feet? So you can see them sooner and just let everybody know that the PAPs are 50 feet above ground or 100 feet or 70 feet or whatever it might be.
Mitch, that's a technical question I can't answer, but as I understand it, there are citing requirements for all of that.
Yeah, that's, oh, that's a very novel approach to this. I don't know if I've seen that one approach at the FAA before, but they do have citing criteria for PAPs, where they're located, related to the runway end and vertically related to runway end are specified. So I don't know if we could get some sort of solution like that without getting the FAA to revisit their criteria.
But one of, it's an interesting question though, Councilor Anderson. One of the, and I didn't walk through the flow chart there, but a couple of the criteria that we could, a couple of the alternatives we could look at would be relocating the location of those further down the runway. But there's other problems with that, where they land on existing taxiways and you just have all kinds of other expenses to go with that. So we really spun around about this for about the last three years before we kind of figured out that there's not really a good solution, unless a lot of money falls on our lap. And then, again, it's still an ongoing problem because trees up there continue to grow. We visited with foresters and arborists up there, the types of trees that are growing in the South Salem Hills are not done growing. They're 200 feet now, they can grow to 400 feet. So this problem's just going to get worse as the years go on, so.
Great, thank you. Okay?
That was the end of my presentation before I turn it over to the Urban Development Director to talk briefly about the Fairview Urban Renewal Area. If there's any other questions, not that we can't come back to it, but if not, I'll hand it over to Kristen.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, but yes.
Hello?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you told me to sing out, so.
Yes, thank you.
No problem. So thank you, folks, for your presentation so far. I look forward to learning more. You know, as in, I don't want our airport to become a money pit. And I, you know, before we consider spending more on an airport, I would like to know what our return on investment would be to the best we can. I know that the agenda, the materials today talks about a cost benefit analysis and I'm certainly in favor of understanding what the cost benefit analysis is for the various action items that are set forth in the proposal. So I think that'll be helpful to me as a decision maker here. I'm very supportive of electric powered aviation because that would address the concerns of noise. I'm sure they'll be a little noisy, but much less, and would also address concerns of pollution to the area. And as the mayor pointed out, would be, I'm curious to know whether we could partner with someone like PGE to incentivize electric planes to take off and touch down here or electric-based aviation schools. Electric, electric-based mechanics. I'm sure electric planes don't operate the same way as piston-powered. So to the, to the extent that we can incentivize that sort of approach, I would be particularly interested in finding out what kind of opportunities there are there. But anyway, I'm just, but I appreciate, those are my questions for now. Oh, actually, I did have one more. So page 14 of materials, one of the action item talks about preparing and marketing vacant land for development under strategy recommendations. It states that lease revenue represents 92% of our annual operating revenue for the airport and that there is strong demand for additional shovel-ready industrial land along the I-5 corridor. And the recommendation is that we take immediate steps to make that land ready to capture. And what I'm just curious is, when you say we have land available for development, are you talking about for a variety of commercial purposes or just strictly aviation-related? Because it kind of sounds like it could support other businesses who don't necessarily plan on using the airport all the time, but just, we've got a lot of land, we should consider generating revenue, which I'm generally in favor of. We need to find ways to increase revenue for the city. So I'm wondering if that's, that's what you meant by that.
Yes, thank you, Councilor Noidak. Those are great questions. And I'll start with your last one first. Mitch, if you'll go back to the developable property slide, I'll see if I can, I'll drill down just a little bit. And actually, we have undertaken some of those steps. We actually have a Business Oregon Grant right now that we're going through the shovel-ready certification process on what you'll see is the eight acres, the four acres and the 17 acres on the south end. So the 17 acres is currently on the airport property inside the fence, but fences can be moved. So it can be off the airport if we get the FAA approval to make it a non-aviation piece. The four acre piece and the eight acre piece are already off the airport. In fact, in the center there, you'll see it was under construction when this picture was taken. This is a public works, a construction waste transfer facility. So this is essentially an industrial piece of property already that the airport owns. So this four acre and eight acre piece are essentially already straight industrial. We still have to go through the FAA approval process, but as Mitch indicated in his presentation, that Part 163 approval that we can get now will make that a much more streamlined process. When I asked the FAA about the 17 acre piece, that's where they sat back in their chairs and said, if you really, if we allow you to release that 17 acres, we're very concerned that you only have a small sliver of property left to preserve for future aviation development. So we're kind of at this kind of tipping point. Again, I mentioned really my presentation, we're at this decision point where we either have to develop new, we either have to prepare new developable property or we have to work very, very cautiously with the property that we have, in which case we'd probably only have the eight and the four to develop non-aviation. And the rest, we would probably have to maintain for aviation. And the tricky part there is that those could sit still for years as they have because the pool of potential aviation development is very small. Whereas the pool for potential developers for just general commercial industrial aviation is much, much larger. And as Mill Creek Corporate Center is now getting built out, there's a much higher demand for commercial industrial property in Salem. And so the airport's property, we get a lot of inquiries to build on our property, but number one, it's not quite ready yet, hasn't gone through all of its permitting processes and wetland delineations and all in biological and archaeological investigations, and we don't have the FAA or land releases yet. So we're, we're working on it, but at the same time, we need to think about how we're going to develop the airport going forward over the next several decades. Other comments that you made, absolutely, we don't, we don't disagree whatsoever. I think we'd love to have some of these new technology companies. Mitch mentioned Garmin, Garmin's at the top of this screen here, just to the right of this blue 10 acre piece. That's the Garmin Aviation Facility there. They're a wonderful tenant, they provide, I guess, over 500 jobs here on the airport, including their call center. Those types of industries here in Salem are fantastic. They provide, you know, high-paying jobs, tax base. Obviously, an industry that's important. If we can get some more of the green technology-type businesses here on the Salem Airport. And Mitch mentioned, we don't need any infrastructure improvements to accommodate those. So I think everything that you're saying is exactly what we're thinking. And to go back to where you first started, the cost benefit analysis piece of this next master plan update, I think is going to be the most critical piece. As we talk about the costs, you know, I have the airport manager side of my head, which says, don't ever give up any of your infrastructure. But there's the business side that says all of this infrastructure costs money to maintain going forward. And what will happen is someday this runway, which is not grant eligible, is going to require a major rehabilitation. And we just rehabilitated our primary runway with grant funding three years ago and it was three and a half million dollars. So by the time this other runway comes due, we're not going to have the three and a half million dollars to do that. So at some point, it will probably die a natural death anyway. And that could be 10 or 20 years from now. And this goes back to a question the mayor asked earlier in the presentation, what's the timeframe for this? The timeframe can be anything we want it to be. But if we need the property and we want to reduce our ongoing expenses, probably sooner rather than later. But if I were, if I were picking a number, I would say probably sometime between now and 10 years from now. It just depends. The runway's in really good condition today, we take very good care of it, but it's not going to last forever. And it really is just a balance of cost versus benefit, how much property we need to open up, what we do with all of this new property. If we, if we build hangars and aviation facilities closer to the runways, then do we redevelop some of the properties along 25th Street and how does all that look? So there's a lot of alternatives typically in a master plan that we can choose from. And those alternatives will have cost benefit analysis associated with them so that we can, we, the city of Salem, can make informed, intelligent business decisions.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? Councilor Noidak, questions?
Yeah, I, if you, Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple follow-ups. So first of all, you talked about sport aircraft projected to increase by 144% through 2035 as an aircraft national trend. Is a sport aircraft like a VFR, you know, a visual flights rule only? Those little puddle jumpers I see flying around, is that what you mean by sport aircraft?
Yeah, I think a sport, Mitch, you might know more about this than I do. I think a sport aircraft license is a license that's below a private pilot license. So it allows you to fly in VFR-type weather. There's some other restrictions that go with it, so maybe you can't carry passengers. I'm not really sure what all the requirements are.
Smaller aircraft, John, they're, they look like single-engine piston, they're a little bit lighter, not quite as capable. So they're not something that you would want to fly across country and they're more for recreational or short hops.
Okay, all right. And I guess my only other question would be, given all the craziness that happened in 2020 and 2021, I now understand why we need to plan for emergencies. And I mean, would there be any grant opportunities to make Salem more of a hub for emergency response-related activities in the event of Cascadia or other, the next major wildfire, for example?
We certainly hope so. With my colleagues, with the part of the city emergency manager, the state emergency manager and State Department of Aviation, all the folks that are involved in the emergency preparedness side of airports, absolutely accept that there's very little money available. Trying to find the grant funding to do any of the projects is problematic. And as it stands right now, the FAA does not make grant funding available for emergency preparedness-type activities. If they did earthquakes here, they'd have to do hurricanes in the southeast and they have to do tornadoes in the Midwest. And they, they just don't have the mechanism to put all that together, although they're starting to move more in that direction. But it's a slow move because it's the federal government. So we're really hoping that at some point, maybe the state will put together some sort of a huge bond measure that's an emergency preparedness-type bond measure that facilities, not just airports, but facilities across the state can really start making some headway into how to strengthen their airports. And one of the first things I'd like to do here is actually just accomplish a seismic study of this airport to better understand what will happen to this airport, given a 9.0 earthquake. We have some anecdotal data from, from folks down at Oregon State University, but to do a full seismic study, and I know that Newport's already done that. So there's costs associated with that, those are things that the FAA won't fund. So we need to find some grant funding to accomplish some of those tasks.
Great. Okay, anyone else? All right, then we'll move on. Is it Kristen will take us into the?
I get the last slide. Oh, not that one. I get the two last slides, I guess, then. So I want to talk about a couple of opportunities. And as some of you may recall, back before we had our airport work session canceled a couple of times, we were in front of council as the Urban Renewal Advisory Board to talk about the Fairview Urban Renewal Area. And at that time, we were looking at a potential expansion of that urban renewal area, the green areas that you see here around the 10 acres and around where the terminal building is, of doing a cherry stem to pick up these areas and bring them into the Fairview Urban Renewal Area. Because we had some potential development interest up on that 10 acre parcel that needed a taxiway improvement and then also some terminal building improvements. And we still have the $2 million cash on hand within the Fairview Urban Renewal Area, which is our which is our only reason right now for not closing down that, that urban renewal area. So we can't collect any more tax increments. We're done with that. But we can, we still have money to spend or return it to all of the affected taxing districts. What we're looking at now is rather than a substantial amendment to bring in these pieces, you know, far to the east and further to the north, would be to use that two million dollars within the existing boundary. So down just below the, where it says sixty-five acres, within that blue line that lays over the airport, doing a minor amendment to pick up another three to four acres directly adjacent to that and constructing some infrastructure improvements that would help us to develop that southern end of the airport. So we definitely have some improvements in that area that are needed, that could facilitate a new hangar development, maybe some new commercial industrial aviation-related development in that area. It's the area on the airport where we're seeing the most interest. And I think that would be our most expeditious and have our highest return on investment for those remaining two million dollar funds. So that then we could just get that urban renewal area closed out.
Could you help me out on this then? If you have some development in that blue area that you described and you invest urban renewal funds, will whatever goes there contribute then to the airport or to an urban renewal area? What, what, how, how does that work?
It, it would, so in terms of the tax revenue or?
Whatever, whether it's tax or, or fees or rents or whatever you're doing there.
So any tax revenue generated now within the entire Fairview Urban Renewal Area does not come to the urban renewal area. We can't collect any more tax.
Okay.
It's our maximum indebtedness, right? And then any leasehold revenue goes to the airport fund.
So the tax revenue would go to all the jurisdictions? And then, depending on the nature of the development, it, it could help support the airport?
Yes.
Okay, but the taxes don't help support the airport?
No.
Okay.
No.
Fifty-six, sixty-five, fourteen, ten, and twenty-one acre parcels you've identified are part of what happens when you abandon that secondary runway? Is that what that, you're telling us there?
The ten and fourteen already exist.
Okay.
The four and eight, the south end already exists.
Okay.
A portion of the sixty-five, most of that already exists. So it's really the fifty-six and the twenty-one that would be picked up if we eliminated the secondary runway.
And that's what we show to FAA as our sort of available support. And that's our, our available sustainable land for supporting the airport into the future.
Yes, after we complete the master plan process.
Okay.
Right. Anderson, did I see a question?
I had one, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I think the mayor kind of answered it. And my, my takeaway is removing the airport gives us more developable land on the airport site. And we don't need urban renewal to have that, that development. And your thinking is, and this is maybe John and Mitch too, if the second air runway were removed, the FAA would be very likely to approve commercial industrial development on those, on, on the fifty-six acres, which most of it is right now over where the runway is.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's more inclined to be aviation-related development on the fifty-six acres.
Right.
So their concern is using some of that acreage where in that sixty-five acre area. If we were to use that for industrial, commercial, non-aviation development, they want to know that we've got aviation land elsewhere on the air.
Okay. And what you're also saying is the, the green unbalanced barbell up at the top there, that goes away.
Yes. Yeah. So we wouldn't look at expanding the Fairview Urban Renewal Area.
Except in the white, blue.
Yes, it would just be a few acres around that blue kind of wonky try, sort of triangle piece.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that question also made me think too, that one of the advantages, and it's back to the similar slide that looks like this, but without all the URA stuff, is that by, by thinking through the, the quote-unquote right sizing of the airport, one of the things that, that this does for the airport is that it creates an all-AIP eligible airport, meaning the entire airport is now grant-eligible. Again, where it's not now, the secondary runway is not, a portion of our runway actually wasn't eligible. So we have a hundred and fifty wide primary runway, but they would only pay to rehabilitate the first, the center one hundred feet. So what they're doing over time is they're starting to pull grant eligibility off of various surfaces and putting them in your lap. And so if you can't afford them, then you can't afford them. And so what, what I can see happening over time is that some of the taxiways that connect to those runways will stop being grant-eligible. And so what we'd like to move to is an all-AIP eligible airport. And the master plan, of course, as Councilor Nordike said, would, would show the cost benefit of, of all of that, so that we can see the math and what we would generate new revenue, what we would save in long-term expenses and rehabilitation projects and such.
Councilor Nordike?
I think most of my questions have been addressed. I'm just curious, Director Rutherford, to the extent you can guess or have some insight into what the future development might look like. Do you, are there parties in mind for these projects? And I'm just kind of curious to what, what level of detail you have about potential uses for some of the areas on this map.
Yeah, so we continue to get hangar interest development in the southern end. And then we've also been approached by a couple of businesses that are aviation-related that are, would be moving into the Salem market. I, I can't, sorry, can't give any more specifics about them than that, but they would be aviation-related businesses.
Waiting for the other shoe to drop there.
Um, the, the materials you gave us also referenced wetlands in the area. And taking that into account, can you explain a little bit more about what that would look like and how that might be impacted by updates to the master plan?
So I'm, the, the area that is, it has some of our greatest environmental concerns is that fourteen-acre parcel. And that, and John, maybe you can speak to that one a little bit more in terms of wetlands and some of the biological species in that area. So that one is not development-ready.
Right. So I think the fourteen-acre parcel, if we were going to categorize them in terms of most development-ready, the least development-ready, this fourteen-acre piece is probably least for a couple of reasons. One, there are five Oregon white oaks, mature Oregon white oak standing over there. They've been severely damaged because of the ice storm. So we're trying to figure out what, if they're going to survive or not. There's also a significant number of checkermallow plants, which are also a protected species. And there's, I think there's some wetlands over there. And if you'll notice, without the runway extension, all the black future extensions here, that, that parcel is, is quite a distance from any of the aviation surfaces. It would be very, very expensive for us to connect that, that parcel to the airfield. I think that probably likely that's going to be a, a non-aviation parcel, be converted to a non-aviation parcel that you would access off of Turner Road, similar to the property right next door to it, which is West Coast Washers. The tricky part there is that any significant development further down Turner Road is going to require Turner Road improvements. And so that's not an inexpensive proposition either. So this fourteen-acre piece is, it's an orphan. It's out there on its own. And it's going to take a lot of tender loving care and attention before it can ever become anything. So that may be the last one that we ever touch. But, but you never know, you know, if you get the right developer that comes in that needs a parcel bad enough and they've got the right amount of money, maybe they can make it work.
And it was also mentioned along with the wetland was the archaeological survey. Has there been an archaeological survey of the airport or of these undeveloped areas at the airport yet?
Some of the, some of the parcels have been. Certainly this southern area, a lot of it, before these hangars were built, the archaeological was done. So it's been done in, in portions that have been developed over time. I, I guess I'd like to see as we go through the master planning process and we open up larger tracks for development, to have all of that cleared, environmental, biological, wetlands, hazmat, all of that just done in one fell swoop, instead of trying to shotgun approach it where we have each development has to do their own, because it's very expensive and inefficient to do it that way. But there are, there are pieces that have been done, yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. Anything else, Kristen, you want to?
Um, just to go over our next steps. And so I'm, I'm, right now, the plan is that we will be coming back to council for formal action or direction to engage with the FAA to be able to use the funding that they want to make available to us to get the master plan underway. So you will see us again in the not-too-distant future to get your formal approval to do that. And then also, we will be back with a request to get approval to initiate a minor amendment to the urban renewal area so that we can make those two million dollars in remaining funds available for infrastructure work within that southern portion.
Okay. Jim, did you have a question?
I, oh, sorry.
Louis, no, okay, sorry. Trevor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, maybe it's an overly simple question. But if this right sizing moves us towards the, the one, you know, fully grantable airway, would the terminal have to move and where do we think it might move to?
Oh, go ahead, John.
Yeah. It's, it's hard to say, probably not. But certainly in the master planning process, we can look at, really through that process, we can look at any option. The thing is, is where the terminal is currently located is where the commercial parking ramp is. And it's also where the taxiways from the primary runway to this parking ramp are, are wide enough and strong enough to handle larger aircraft, whether it be commercial aircraft or FEMA, US government-sized aircraft. So it would make the most sense for the terminal to be in its current location, although its current location does kind of restrict its development, the developable, its growth. But, but it, but it could. It's something that we can look at. Same with the air traffic control tower. It may not be in its, its perfect location. Given a one runway airport, it might be too distant from the one runway. But those are all things that we consider during the master planning process.
Anything else, Trevor?
Yeah, and then my, my last question is, so the, with, with reference to the Fairview Urban Rural Funds that are left over, have, have you looked at any other? I mean, it sounds like this is a good way to leverage funds for maximum benefit. But has, has you, has the community identified any other potential uses for those? I, I, I like the idea of multiple choices. Are there any other options that we would have with those funds?
So we have completed all of the projects that were within the Fairview Plan. We don't have any other infrastructure needs within that plan. There has been some community discussion about using these funds to build trails across, or in the vicinity of where Hillcrest is. Some of that conversation occurred before Hillcrest was acquired. It was purchased about four or five months ago by an entity out of Southern California that does drug and alcohol inpatient treatment facilities and also mental health hospitals. So their plan is not going to be, you know, to redevelop the whole Hill, Hillcrest site into housing. They want to continue kind of a healthcare-type use in that location. And so building out trails for future residential use in that area doesn't make sense with the new, new ownership or the new intended purpose of that property?
Thank you. I think that answers both my, my questions. Thank you.
Any, anyone else?
One final comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Tom, please.
You know, we're in the middle of a climate action plan and council assess certain goals. And we know that fifty-three percent of our greenhouse gas emissions comes from transportation, including air, airports. And I would presume that any master plan is going to look at specifically goal number six, which is commercial airlines, not only in terms of, does that work? In terms of, we're close to Eugene Airport, we're close to Portland Airport. There may be other ways to, you know, get people to and from those airports. So is it actually feasible from an economic point of view? And also, how does it affect the climate action in terms of cars driving to Portland versus a plane driving, flying extra miles in, in terms of which is really more harmful to the environment? So, you know, I will say that I'm not at all convinced that since there were, by my count, by the report, one, two, three, four, four major failures of commercial airlines and one minor failure of commercial airlines. You know, how many times do we have to beat that with the stick before we decide it's not going to be going anywhere? So I, I would very much like a thorough analysis of that goal in terms of both our closeness to the other airports and in terms of the climate action.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I thank you. Yeah, I, I would like to echo, you know, the cost-benefit analysis is really going to be important for me. And as part of that analysis, understanding the impact on our climate is of crucial importance. And we all know that to get from point A to point B, there are increasingly a number of electric options that are friendlier to our environment. And that's one of the reasons why I'm so interested in supporting green technologies to come to our airport, because I see that as a win-win. It's an opportunity to get private business here. It's an opportunity to support electric planes, but without the same climate impacts that you get from piston-powered craft. I also really like the idea of having aviation schooling here. We know from the materials in front of us tonight, and I've read this elsewhere before, there's a national shortage of pilots. And if we have aviation schools that are training students how to operate electric aircraft, we're helping to further not only an industry that is in desperate need of pilots, but we're also furthering incentives for more and more people to go electric in terms of air travel. So I, I'll be curious to see where, what, what the money shows, how much is all of this going to cost? How is it going to impact our environment? I'm still very much curious to see what happens. And I'm reserving judgment until I see further information. But this has been very helpful tonight. Thank you.
Great.
And Councilor Norde, just to, to talk about timelines a little bit. So the funding from the FAA would be available at its soonest in twenty twenty-two. And then it would be, once that funding is available, that we would start the master plan update where that analysis would occur. So just for community expectations, we won't have that information for a good two, possibly three years.
Okay.
I appreciate you telling me that. That is good to know.
Okay. Very good. Well, then, if there's nothing else, thank you very much, and we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.